As Mayor, I call this meeting of Stanton City Council to order. I note that this meeting is being broadcast over the city's cable channel and streamed live on the city's website so that members of the public may hear our meeting. The meeting is also being recorded. I ask the Clerk of Council to call the roll for confirmation of those council members present for today's meeting.
Mayor Oakes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
He will not be here until midway through the work session.
Thank you. Ms. Doll.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Ms. Darby.
Here.
Ms. Mead.
Here.
Mr. Claffey.
Here.
I confirm all council members are present.
All right, thank you. I ask that City Manager Steve Rosenberg note the participation of any city officials or colleagues or anyone else during today's meeting by Zoom or telephone.
Madam Mayor, council members Doll and Mead are participating on the Zoom platform. I had been told by Vice Mayor Robertson that he would participate in the work session on the Zoom platform, though as you've noted, he's not present at this time, but perhaps he will join during the work session.
Okay.
Kurt Plowman is participating remotely, and two other individuals, Ivana Griffith and Craig Wood, will also be participating on the Zoom platform.
All right, thank you. Please let me mention that notice reasonable under the circumstances of this meeting has been given to the public contemporaneously with the notice provided to members of City Council. In addition to limited public seating in City Hall, access to this meeting has been provided to the public by audio feed on the city's cable channel and the city's website. During this work session, as in the past, there will be no opportunity for public comment. Public comment will be received during council's regular meeting, which will begin at 7:30 p.m. Instructions for public comment by telephone can be found on Agenda for the Regular Meeting and on Council's website at www.ci.stanton.v.a.us/government/city-council. Also, let me highlight and have reflected in the meeting minutes that this meeting, although being conducted in person, is also being conducted by Zoom with virtual participation by certain members of City Council, given the catastrophic nature of the declared emergency and disaster related to the COVID-19 outbreak, which is part of the total circumstances makes it impractical or unsafe to assemble in a single location. The meeting is being held consistent with the City Council Ordinance 2020-04 regarding continuity of government, a copy of which can be found online at www.stanton.v.a.us/ I'd also like to remind everyone, if you come into City Hall, please wear a mask, and if you come into the chambers or use the restroom, please have your mask on. When you come up to the mic, if you care to speak during the public hearing or matters from the public, you may remove your mask. We do have disinfectant wipes if you so choose to wipe the microphone off. Also, I would ask the City Council members, if they care to be recognized, please speak up and address the mayor, and the mayor will recognize you. All right. Next on the agenda is the consideration of work session and regular meeting agendas.
Mayor Oakes.
Councilman Holmes.
I move to approve the work session agenda and regular meeting agenda with the following changes or change. As to the regular meeting, the addition of item D, update on allocations of CARES Act relief funds.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor with change for an addition. Do we have a second?
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Claffey.
I'll second her.
All right, so we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Mayor Oakes.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Question carries.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robertson has joined the meeting, so perhaps the clerk would like to invite his vote as well.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Question carries.
All right, thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is the report on the disposition of surplus property. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Phil Treier, the city's chief finance officer, will present this item.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. Madam Mayor, members of council, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. Tonight, we are here to provide your annual surplus property sales report for FY 2020. Sales of surplus property is allowed as provided by Ordinance 2015-05, which authorizes staff to dispose of surplus personal property which has been designated obsolete for its minimal value without specific approval from council. To do so, all sales must meet the following criteria. The property must be designated as surplus in writing by the Director of Finance or designate and endorsed by the City Manager or designate prior to auction. Ordinance 2015-05 calls specifically for the use of the GovDeals Government Surplus Auction Sale Site to dispose of city surplus personal property to the highest bidder. GovDeals is the most widely used government surplus auction website in the state of Virginia, and it has 240 local governments throughout the Commonwealths using it. GovDeals charges a 12.5% commission, which can be absorbed by the locality, the purchaser, or split between both. The city rate structure in FY 16, 17, and 18 were 7.5% to the city and 5% to the buyer. In FY 19 and early FY 19, the city began passing the entire commission on to the purchaser, so the rate structure now stands at 12.5% to the buyer and 0% to the city. The ordinance further states that the Finance Department must report annually to council about the categories of property that was disposed of. The last such report was provided to council in March 2020 and covered fiscal years 17, 18, and 19. In FY 20, we sold seven items for $17,813 and took one transfer from the city to the schools. The breakdown of categories sold was general equipment, office supplies and equipment, shop equipment, playground equipment, a vehicle, and a heavy equipment vehicle. Details of the past year have been provided for in your packet, which breaks out the individual sales. Since 2009, the city has received over $380,000 from the GovDeals surplus auction website, and our annual surplus property sales report is on City Manager's master schedule and will next take place on October 14, 2021. I'm sure you'll have that circled on your calendar, so I'll be happy to field any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Treier? Wasn't one of the items an old pickup truck?
Yes, yes, we had a 20-year-old pickup truck, which we sold for $1,100, and the 30-year-old loader, we actually sold for $15,000, but it had to be towed away because it wouldn't run.
All right, Councilmember Holmes, did you snag that pickup truck?
No.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so the next item is item number three. It's a discussion and consideration of possible process to be followed at a future City Council meeting to receive public input concerning the Second Amendment. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item was included on the agenda at the request of Councilmember Darby, and I defer to her to further explain the item.
The reason that I asked for this to be placed on the agenda to discuss having a public hearing regarding the Second Amendment issue is that I know it's very important to many of the citizens in Stanton, and I feel like we are duty-bound to have an advertised public hearing so that we can have folks from, you know, share their views with us regarding that topic, since that was not something that's happened in the past. And I am fine having that done, you know, in a manner which is safe, in a location where appropriate social distancing can be accommodated and technology can be used.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments? Councilmember Holmes.
Yes, I thought we actually had hearings back when this was on the agenda the first time, because we did it for, what, three, was it three weeks that we had people come in and...
Yeah, that was under Matters from the Public.
Yeah.
So it wasn't an actual public hearing.
Mayor Oakes, this is Councilwoman Mead.
Councilwoman Mead.
Yeah, I wonder if we could clarify what the Second Amendment issue means? Does that mean we want people to comment on whether we should adopt a resolution to become a Second Amendment sanctuary city? Is it just an opportunity for citizens to state whether they support the Second Amendment resolution? Ms. Darby, could you clarify that, please?
Councilwoman Mead, I think that it's an all-encompassing public hearing that would allow for folks to do both of the things that you described as they so choose. I think that it's obviously a topic of discussion that brings out passion on both those who support and those who have concerns, so I would like to hear from all of our citizens in a public hearing-style format to hear what they believe Stanton should consider moving forward.
And I have another question, if you don't mind.
I don't mind.
So if only, for instance, the 380 people who presented a petition, the "We Are For Stanton" petition, will their voices be counted, or will they have to show up at the public hearing in order to express their views? And the other part of that question is, if only 250 people showed up to support a Second Amendment sanctuary city resolution, does that mean we would move on and not do a Second Amendment resolution? And if ultimately, if the intention is to adopt a Second Amendment sanctuary resolution, why don't we just save taxpayer money, avoid a COVID-19 infection opportunity, and just present City Council at its next meeting with a resolution that would be acceptable to the four members of City Council who clearly support a Second Amendment resolution? Why don't we just do that and move on?
Councilwoman Mead, the one thing that I took away from the petition of the 300-plus folks was that it was not saying that they necessarily are opposed to the Second Amendment. It was asking us to not expend time regarding the issue. And actually, since the law changed from Governor Ralph Northam on July 1st in the General Assembly, allowing localities to have more say as to citizens' gun rights, I believe it is an issue that this council should hear the wishes of its constituency.
So you're saying that petition doesn't count?
No, ma'am. I'm not saying that at all. I think that the 380 people that signed a petition, they have every right to voice their views, again, if they so choose, and if they choose not to, then we already have their name, and I believe yours, listed on that petition.
Yes, my name is listed on that petition, and I was proud to sign that petition, to represent and be amongst the citizens of Stanton who believe that this issue is not a local issue. This is up to the Virginia Legislature, and it's up to the Supreme Courts ultimately. And so, you know, I really do think that those folks' feelings should be known and heard as being opposed to being a Second Amendment sanctuary city. And that, but I will say that if ultimately that's your intention, again, let's just save the taxpayers some money, our staff some trouble, save the potential for a COVID-19, you know, hotspot, and just bring it to the next meeting as an agenda item and vote on it. You have the votes. I can count to four, you can count to four, we can all count to four, so let's just do it.
Are there any other comments, questions?
This is Carolyn Doll. I had a question about all of the scores of people that have already spoken for and against this, as well as sending letters by mail and email, and so do we want the clerk to go back and count all of those so we all have a starting place, or do all those people have to come again in person and give their opinion? And my other question about that is, if we're going to look at a Second Amendment sanctuary resolution, I'm curious, does the resolution say that we won't obey the laws of the state if we don't think they're constitutional? Or are we going to do a little watered-down version like some other localities have done, where it's really just saying what we already all believe because we took an oath to support the Constitution of the state and the federal government, and that includes the Second Amendment? So we've taken an oath to support that. So I guess I'm curious, what's the difference that this resolution, what's it going to say that's different?
Madam Mayor, Mark Robertson.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Madam Mayor, in answer to Ms. Mead's position, I understand where she's coming from, but I do take a different look at it. Simply, she said it was the Legislature's and the Governor's prerogative. I understand that, but if I read correctly, the Legislature approved that it go to the individual cities and the individual townships and counties, and then the Governor signed it on April the 15th or 17th, I believe, that it was incumbent upon the cities, the counties, and their governing bodies to take that issue up if they so desired. And it's simply a matter of letting the people speak. You know, I don't quite understand, I know Ms. Doll doesn't agree with it, and I understand that, and you're right, we all took an oath to this office, but it's simply, it was a big enough issue in the Democratic Legislature and the Democratic Governor that signed it, that they wanted it in the individual townships and cities, and so therefore, I think it's incumbent upon us to at least explore the issue and let the citizens express themselves. And that's something, you know, that I, and I've told my other members on an individual basis, if we go to Stanton High School or wherever we go to, and if they want to talk to 3 o'clock in the morning, so be it. We're going to be one tired bunch of people the next day, but, you know, we are representing the people, so that's just my take on it.
But this is Carolyn Doll again. My one question is, all the people who have spoken previously, for and against, and people from other states, and people from other cities, and people from the county, and people who wrote us and emailed us, is that all washed away, or are we going to count what we've already heard and then proceed from there for folks who haven't already spoken about it? I'm just procedurally trying to figure out how this is going to work.
Councilmember Claffey.
I don't understand the counting. We're not counting anything. We're having an open hearing from the public to discuss the Second Amendment. There's no, there's no counting. Who said what? It's an opportunity for the citizens to speak. I think we're making this way too complicated.
Councilmember Holmes.
Thank you. Sorry. I'm a little concerned about having a big group of people in one spot with COVID the way it is, and, you know, I mean, I just, I worry about it all the time, and I just, I could see people showing up there and not wearing masks and not doing things that they should do, and what are we going to do about that? You know, I just, I don't know why, if we don't, if we're just going to listen, why don't we just go ahead and vote for it? You know, and because we're spending a whole, we're going to spend a whole meeting just on this, and that seems like, you know, we've got a lot of other things going on, it just seems like something that we don't really need to put that much energy into, because I think we know how the vote's going to go.
Well...
And we had a lot of people speak, both for and against, the last time, you know, the very first meeting, it was more for, very few against. The second meeting was about half and half, then the third meeting was a lot of people against. So I don't know how you, what's going to come of this, if you're just going to, I mean, if people want to just speak, I mean, it's going to be...
But it's going to be a public hearing, an official advertised public hearing, and folks can come out again if they so choose. If they choose not to come out again, that is their choice. If they do not feel comfortable coming out because of the COVID, we will have it set up through Zoom so they can certainly call in like we do any meeting. This is just a matter of allowing the citizens' voices to be heard. It's not going to be, it's not going to be a situation where there's necessarily going to be a resolution in place, at least not that night. It's a matter of listening to the people, and then the resolution would follow or not. But I feel certain that we can have a large enough space, and we can police, if you will, the personal protection that's put into place, such as wearing masks, social distancing. And Mr. Rosenberg, what location would you recommend?
If it was council's desire to schedule such a meeting, as indicated in the agenda briefing, I believe I would recommend that it be a special meeting that would be devoted only to this subject, and we have had some preliminary discussions with Dr. Smith with Stanton City Schools about the use of the auditorium at Stanton High School. On one prior occasion during my time with the city, there was a meeting there related to the Atlantic Coast Pipeline, which, where council met. I don't recall if it was a special meeting or a regular meeting, but it nicely accommodated what was, for that subject, a very large crowd, and I believe it could do the same in this instance.
Okay, would you recommend an actual vote in order to allow the public hearing or simply a consensus?
So this is on the, this is not on your regular meeting agenda.
Correct.
But as it's styled on the work session agenda, it is for discussion and consideration, so it would be my preference that there be a vote by council, and that vote could be taken during the work session.
Okay, is everyone in agreement to a vote concerning this matter during the work session?
This is Carolyn Doll. I had one more question that didn't get answered, and it's like, I'm aware that the people who have already spoken, there were a lot of people that were not Stanton citizens. Can we, in a public hearing, ensure that we're hearing from the Stanton citizens and not people from other cities and other states and all over the country? Because it's not fair to the Stanton citizens to have to sit till 3:00 a.m. before they can talk, and so can there be some kind of consideration for that?
Mr. Glenn, could we have this, have it set up to where the Stanton citizens can speak first?
Sounds like a law school exam question.
Yeah.
I would be most comfortable if we encourage Stanton citizens rather than non-Stanton citizens to speak, but non-Stanton citizens, so it's all covered.
Did you hear that, Councilwoman Doll?
No.
No, I thought.
All right. Mr. Glenn, I'm sorry, do you mind going to the microphone?
First I said it sounds like a law school exam question. I would be most comfortable if we did not prohibit non-Stanton citizens from speaking. Anytime we get into the area of the First Amendment, I think we ought to be more expansive with the rights rather than less expanses. But there's nothing wrong if council wants to take Stanton citizens first and then anyone else after that, and encourage Stanton citizens, and I guess implicitly discourage non-Stanton citizens from speaking. But if they do want to appear, whether they're from the county, whether they're from Louisa, whether they're from any place in the state, let them speak. Let everybody have their say. That way, we don't want to foul First Amendment considerations.
Right, thank you. If we were to have this public hearing, on what date, Mr. Rosenberg, were you considering?
Um...
For the council to consider?
Well, I think I would first like to hear from Councilmember Darby about perhaps what sort of timeframe she had in mind.
Mr. Rosenberg, I believe I said to you that it didn't matter to me as long as it was before the end of the month, that I thought pushing it off into November seemed to be too long of a timeframe from now until then.
So with that, my suggestion, you have another council, your regular council meeting on October 22nd. I think doing something next week is rushing it in terms of the necessary notices.
Yes.
We could look at something perhaps on Tuesday, October 20th.
All right, Councilmember Claffey.
That's fine.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
I'm not sure. I might have historic Stanton that day.
That evening?
Yeah.
Historic Stanton is not...
It's not.
Historic Stanton is the following week.
Okay. I'm fine with it.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to have a public hearing in relation to the Second Amendment issue with the potential of a resolution to follow on October 20th.
Mayor Oakes.
This is Mark Robertson, Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Do we have a beginning timeline, 7, our typical time council starts, or...
Would you like to add that to the motion?
If we could, if we could start at 7:00 that afternoon, that evening, that would be, I would make that amendment.
Okay, and the location?
Madam Mayor, I wonder if perhaps the motion can exclude those details. I've not vetted the date with Dr. Smith.
Okay, okay.
And so if we need to change the date or we need to change the location, I would hate to be locked down by an action of council this evening, so perhaps the motion could provide for the date and location to be established pursuant to consultation between the mayor and the city manager.
Okay, so Vice Mayor Robertson, would you like to amend it to allowing a public hearing concerning the Second Amendment issue with the potential of a resolution to follow on, to be announced date and place before the end of the month of October?
Before the end, yes, that's fine. I will so move that to be happen, yes.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second.
Councilmember Darby, seconds. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Holmes.
Yes, would we do it like we do in our regular meetings on Matters from the Public, that the Zoom people would go first and then the people that are present, or how would you work that?
We can certainly discuss that. That's how we normally do it in the regular meetings, so we can, the city manager and myself can discuss the logistics of... So we can, uh, the, um, city manager and myself can discuss the logistics of the meeting. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Simmons, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Me?
No.
Mr. Holmes?
No.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Ms. Doll?
No.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. All right. The next item is item number four, the discussion concerning electronic communications meeting platforms. Mr. Rosenberg?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item is included on the agenda, um, at the request of Councilmember Mead, and I would like to invite her to, uh, to, uh, begin the discussion on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. I would just want to very briefly say, I, I want to point out a couple of things. Uh, first of all, the Virginia Department for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing estimates that we have as many as 2,500 deaf or hard-of-hearing citizens in the city of Stanton. These people do not currently have access to our city meetings. They do not have access to our board meetings and commission meetings that are public meetings. We do not provide sign language. We do not provide closed caption hearing for the hearing impaired. And, and I, I think it's time that issue be addressed. I would also like to point out, uh, because we always like to compare ourselves to other cities in the area, looking at Stanton, Lexington, Waynesboro, Augusta County, Winchester, and Roanoke. Of those localities, all have audio live stream and audio recording. Uh, of, I'm sorry, all of them have, I'm going to, I'm getting this, okay, all have audio live stream and audio recording. Um, uh, the cities of Lexington, Waynesboro, Augusta County, uh, Winchester, and Roanoke allow public comments accepted by any means other than spoken. Uh, each of those also, Stanton does not. Each of them allows video live stream. Stanton does not. Each of them allows video recording. Stanton does not. Augusta County and Roanoke offer closed captions during live stream, uh, in addition to all those other elements. So here, we're, we're 20 years into the 21st century. I, I can't hardly believe that. But we are 20 years into this century and I think it's time that Stanton had current technology to make our meetings accessible to all of our citizens. Thanks.
Uh, Madam Mayor, um, with, with those introductory remarks by Councilmember Mead, at this point I'd like to ask our Chief Technology Officer, Kurt Plowman, to provide an update to council, um, about the initiatives that are already underway in the technology arena. We previously shared with council plans to use a portion of the CARES Act funds for technology improvements in council chambers and in the caucus room. And then I believe he's also prepared to address, uh, to some extent, the issues that Councilmember Mead has raised with her introductory remarks. And then at that point, it's our intention to, to open it up to you all for a discussion and perhaps to give staff some guidance about the direction in which we might head, um, with initiatives in addition to those that Mr. Plowman will share with you now.
Mr. Plowman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for mentioning counsel. Mr. Rosenberg? Sorry, I heard, okay. Uh, thanks for time this evening to talk to you regarding electronic meetings. Want to give you a quick update on where we are and where we're going with electronic meetings. Uh, I'm trying to drive a laptop here from the outside of town, so trying to make sure we got it right here. Okay, there we go. Um, give you an update of where we are. Our primary driving per principle on this has been replicating the pre-COVID environment as closely as possible. Uh, council can hear and see as if they were in one room together. Uh, we've been successful in doing this for in-person, for Zoom-only, hybrid meetings as well as off-site meetings. Uh, and as citizens continue to get the audio feed, uh, as well as our PEG feed. Since the COVID capabilities, since COVID has started, we've increased, uh, additional capabilities such as providing real-time citizen comment where citizens can call in and, and make comments at, uh, at the appropriate times during the meetings. We're posting audio recordings and uploading those to YouTube for archiving purposes. So those are now available to the public. Uh, we've also added PEG channels for Glow Fiber, which is the new carrier in town. We've really stressed, uh, making the meetings as easy as possible for the participants, such as not having to switch to different meetings for the closed meetings. Uh, hybrid, uh, meetings tend to cause some, some issues when you're not dealing with everybody in the same room. Meeting security has also been a huge important piece for us. A lot of localities have experienced issues with Zoom bombing and, and other kinds of issues. Providing a good, reliable, consistent feed has been important for us. Uh, one of the things that has not been a major driver for us has been cost. Uh, we are paying for Zoom accounts, web and our features, free conference call, we're providing toll-free calling for the public. Um, we're spending probably at this point, uh, somewhere between 500 to 1,000 a year for the, the services that we are providing and maintaining these, um, meetings as they are. Low information behind the scenes because the meetings may look fairly easy because everybody runs Zoom meetings fairly regularly. Um, to provide the meetings such as we're doing tonight, we've got a total of five computers that are running the meetings, the streaming software, and the various displays that are available for staff to see everything. It generally takes two staff to provide for the meetings. Uh, that's to make sure everything's functioning. That's to manage the multiple streams that are coming and going. Uh, we are constantly monitoring, uh, providing a quality assurance, uh, for example, for, um, the, the audio feed. So it's not just a matter of pushing a button, walking away from it. Technology's great, but it does take people behind the scenes to make sure things happen. Uh, and managing the call queues for the public, um, as, as we've gone through, we've certainly learned how to do it, but it still takes manpower to do a lot of this processes. Technology's great, but it doesn't do everything for you. Um, we have completed over 200 meetings since March. Um, you know, I, I, beginning of each meeting, I hear how many meetings council members have attended. Um, we stream all of those. Uh, we stream more than the meetings. Um, I think we did a count. It was 20 some different organizations, groups within the city that we are stream, live streaming meetings for. Um, it, it takes incredible amount of time. We, we spent over 800 man-hours of IT support since the COVID started just on providing live streams for meetings, uh, and, and providing what needs to be done for the public. We are also, sorry, before, uh, Shellcast, um, which is the streaming service that we're providing in-house, which does our, uh, streaming to the web. Uh, prior to COVID, we were running probably less than 10 people actually listening to the live stream. It, it was not a huge demand of people listening to, to the audio of council meetings. Uh, we have recently been peaking at, at over 100 participants at a time now listening to the live audio stream of the meetings. Uh, so interest has certainly expanded. Uh, and we feel that that's really, uh, an important piece that, that we are providing it so that everybody can get access to it. Uh, another component which really has complicated things was providing real-time public comment. Um, we're providing that via a toll-free number. Um, that has to get integrated into the Zoom meeting. Uh, we were actually one of the few localities providing real-time feedback such as this. I have polled all my peers across the state. I've heard from close to 30 other localities, big and small, most are requiring submissions of, of comments, uh, before person or before the meeting, uh, or in-person only. They're not actually providing the ability for the public to comment by phone real-time. Uh, and a lot of the ones that are doing that are actually following the processes that we have developed and have been using since March. Um, I, I've provided a lot of, uh, conversations with my peers to talk about how we're actually doing this. Uh, and most of the localities that are streaming meetings are pretty much only doing their board or city council meetings, maybe the, the zoning. Uh, most are not doing the number of meetings that we're dealing with right now, everything from the bike pad to the Lewis Creek watershed to the library to the board of elections. Um, there's a lot of things that happen in the city, uh, and, and all of those right now are being livestreamed. One of the things that we have been working on, um, and it's, some of this work actually had started pre-COVID, um, at least as far as discussions, um, is upgrading and replacing the audio system both in city council chambers and the caucus room. Uh, one of the issues that we have dealt with is the PA system and the council chambers, as good as it is, is a 30-year-old system. Integrating functionality from such as Zoom, um, for hybrid meetings, um, integrating phone calls into the PA system. That, that system is not capable of doing that. Uh, we, we've hacked that system as much as we possibly can. So we need to replace that system. Uh, need to improve the presentation capabilities within the city council chambers as well as the caucus room. Um, one of the issues that council has always noticed that presentations when somebody's giving to you are behind you. That's not really conducive to you provide, having a good, uh, good meeting when the stuff you're supposed to be paying attention to is actually behind you. Uh, so we, we're going to improve that. Uh, the caucus room, we're going to look at some interactive display technology, probably better known as a smart board, but the ability, because there's a lot of meetings that actually happen in the caucus room outside of city council meetings that's used for training, it's used for, for meetings during the regular day, uh, providing some interactive display technology in there to really utilize what we, uh, where the technology really is. It, it, it's a very common thing to be, to be able to do nowadays. Uh, also looking at providing video in the caucus room. Um, again, that, that, that room is used for an awful lot of meetings, um, especially now with a lot of Zoom meetings going on. That, that really becomes more important to be able to provide that. Um, and we're looking at doing some video in the city council chambers. And some of our decisions based on, uh, how we're going to do the videos could depend on where the conversation goes after I finish talking. Um, we are looking at spending CARES money. We're anticipating a budget of about $200,000 to, to do all these upgrades. Um, you know, technology's out there. A lot of it's inexpensive, a lot of it's not. Um, but we're looking at spending probably $200,000. Um, in order to hit our December 30 target date for CARES money, we're, we have to make a lot of the decisions probably next week. And again, most of the decisions are fairly easy. We think we've got a real good handle on where those are going to go. Um, but we still need some, some better input from, from council. Um, the meeting platform, and I know there's been a lot of talk about Zoom being good, Zoom being bad and other things, um, you know, down the road. Zoom's just a tool. I mean, it doesn't really matter which meeting platform you're using. There's a bunch out there. A lot of have pros and cons. Uh, some people are happy with one, some are happy with the other. Um, it's just a tool. We're not tied to Zoom. Zoom has worked well for us though since March. Um, everybody seems very comfortable with it. As council members, you've all used it in various forms. Everybody seems to be, be able to use it. So platform-wise, it seems to be fairly solid. Um, basic live streaming seems easy. I mean, it, it really does. Every 15-year-old with a, a smartphone can livestream. They do every day. Um, my concern as a CTO for the city is, is a corporate production environment is different. Setting up your home network switch is different than trying to manage it for a city. It's got to be solid. It's got to be reliable. It's got to be dependable. It's got to be easy to use. Um, my job is to keep the technology running, but I have to have other people be able to run it. So I've got to make sure this format's going to workforce every, every single time. Um, so you, you can do it quickly. You can do it cheaply, but we've got to be able to do it. So it's going to continue to function reliably for us. Um, within Zoom, uh, there, there's two different ways of doing meetings. Um, one is, one is the meeting format where everybody is an equal participant. Um, it allows for something called breakout rooms, um, which, one of the challenges of using Zoom is being able to provide for closed meetings. Zoom's a great platform when you want to share it with everybody in the world. US City Council and other boards and commissions may need to go into closed session and being able to handle a situation where I've got some folks in city council chambers and some folks that may not be there, limiting a room, limiting the meeting to them by excluding everybody else becomes somewhat of a challenge. Another concern we have moving forward in, in a platform is, is support. Um, I mean, we already got issues at some points where citizens are struggling to, to simply get a live stream audio feed. Um, you know, I, I don't have the staff to be able to support everybody trying to connect to a Zoom platform or any other, the, the streaming platforms. Uh, we're going to have to assume that, that they're going to be able to make these connections on their own. But, uh, as we start expanding the, the technology ability, then the, the, the need to provide that support also begins to, to expand. Uh, and, and still in my opinion, I think we're just, you need to be able to provide an audio-only feed anyway, because that's still the lowest common denominator. Not everybody has access to smartphone, as we've already talked about. Nobody has broadband access. Nobody has a cellphone. So we still need to be able to provide that audio-only ability. Um, one of the biggest concerns and probably questions moving forward is, is really what council's expectations are going to be as far as video. There's really two different ways that, that, that video, sorry, that video works. Um, it's typical Zoom meeting. Everybody's got an individual camera angle. Um, you know, everybody's familiar with that, that Brady Bunch look. Uh, that's generally done because you've got a separate camera, camera for each participant in the meeting. Um, when we've got a meeting going on, such as we do right now in city council chambers, not every speaker is going to have an individual camera. So you really don't get that Brady Bunch, that, that traditional Zoom look. Um, people I've talked to, so like, you know, I, I want to see the look on so-and-so's face or the, the council's face when something's being discussed. That's going to be really tough because we don't have individual cameras on every member and Zoom really doesn't allow you to have individual camera shots of, of everybody in there. So that's been one of the challenges, trying to figure out how we're going to get a Zoom meeting set up so that it actually makes a lot of sense. Um, so we end up really at that point with what we've got now, a, a shot of the, the dais, uh, as well as individual Zoom participants. Um, if you want the true Zoom look, you're really going to need to have everybody using Zoom, um, because the hybrid meetings really cause these, these kind of problems. The other option you really have with Zoom and most of the other platforms is going to be a speaker-only view, uh, where the person speaking gets the, to be the one who's actually on the, the screen at that time. A couple of things you've got to deal with with there. Um, if you could have lots of different cameras, such that you've got that close-up in-person view of each person, somebody's got to be actually sitting there pushing the buttons to decide which camera view's going to get, get set up. You end up having manpower to be there to actually make those camera shots. Look at the evening news, the, the number of credits at the end of it. There's a lot of people involved in making something that looks so simple. Uh, make it, make it look simple, but it's really not. Um, we've looked at some systems that are going to provide some, could, could provide automated camera selections, um, based on who's speaking. A camera could refocus based to, to a particular area, a particular microphone that, that's going to be active. Issues you get in with that, sometimes the cameras are a little slow if it's got to pan or zoom to a different position. Cameras get confused when there's a spirited discussion going on. You know, lots of people talking, camera doesn't know where to go. It kind of freaks out and you get some really bad video. And if you're doing a speaker-only view, you really do miss out on that non-verbal communication from the people who aren't speaking. Uh, you, you don't get to see somebody else's reaction when something's brought up. And I think that's what people are trying to, to get from video when they're watching these kinds of meetings. Topic I, I consider the slippery slope of video, because well, once you start getting into video, the, the other things really start getting, you, you, you can, you can get into to really deep here. Um, and any some just, just general thoughts and concerns, but, uh, your production quality. I mean, you really don't want to do something where it looks bad. Uh, if we're going to make a foray into, into this, you don't want to do it where people wonder why you're doing it. I mean, we've all seen those government, um, present, government TV channels where you've got a camera in a corner and that's all you've got. That's, that's not really worth doing. You get into things like fixed cameras. You start getting in more into multiple cameras. Do you start looking at, you know, personnel, personal cameras? Um, we've also got to look at how we're going to do sharing of presentations. Do we get into things like on-screen graphics where it's got somebody's name below them when they show up on the screen, uh, or comments or an agenda rolling by on the screen as well? You start getting to, to, to high-production video, you got to start improving the lighting. You know, lighting that looks really flat when you look at, at a, a typical room. So you may need to improve, uh, lighting. Questions you get into also is which platform, you know, do you pick YouTube? Do you pick Facebook, FaceTime? There's numerous other, there are video platforms out there and we still have to control, uh, send video to the PEG feed. And then you also get into making the decisions about, you know, which camera angle's going to be shot. Uh, Ms. Me brought the, the, the point that ADA compatibility and closed captioning is huge. If we're going to put video out there, uh, it's got to be closed captioned. Um, that's an ADA requirement. Uh, we struck, we work very, very hard to keep our website. We work very, very hard to keep our website ADA compliant as much as possible. We start doing video, that is a huge piece. And one that kind of scares me a little bit is archiving a video, because once we start producing it, then we have to start recording it. Once we start recording it, we have to start storing it. Once we start storing it, then it becomes FOIA. So we get into this really slippery slope that, once we start doing video, that's just, becomes more stuff that has to be managed and maintained and taken care of. And I'm not keeping up on my slide over here, I'm sorry. Some of the challenges, and more of these are probably more my challenges than your challenges, but I just felt like I needed to share this. The solution needs to be simple and reliable. I mean, as we said earlier, lots of boards and commissions potentially are going to have to use this. It needs to be something where somebody who's not an IT person can do it. What other boards and commissions are going to be required or should be using it? Who's going to want to livestream video? Who's going to want to be able to do, you know, these kinds of meetings? What about meetings that are being held off-site, that are not held in the council chambers and caucus room? If the library board wanted to livestream, we're going to have to now deal with potentially, you know, that requirement. I wouldn't want to go with different platforms either. We're going to look for a consistent platform for all participants, so when council members are going from one meeting to another, we're not changing from a Zoom to a GoToMeeting to a WebEx, so that we have a consistent look and feel for the meetings as well as how they're going to run. As we start complicating meetings, we start looking also at the need to have more manpower. Video starts getting complicated, because now you start having somebody making those decisions on what the video is going to look like. As I said, we're already looking at at least one IT staff member for every meeting that's happening right now. Some of the bigger meetings take two. If we start looking at video, the concern is that we start getting into lots of other pieces here. Scheduling the meetings, the volume of meetings that we're currently dealing with. As we also look forward, and as we just, the last agenda topic was, how do we do a roadshow? I mean, we spent a lot of time getting everything working here in city council chambers, picked it all up, carried it out to where for the orientation back in on July 1. That was about a 60-hour project between us and the city schools to get all the audio reworked at where, as well as to get everything tested, retested, triple-tested, so that it would actually work. So once we set up all the system to work, we need to be able to pick this up and carry it somewhere else, because there's going to be these needs at some point where we have to take it somewhere else. So when I, when I was in school, marketing classes always said, when you do a meeting, have a talk, and you'd have an ask. So my ask, I'm sorry, my ask is, you know, this is not really a technology discussion. We've been able to adapt the changing requirements, we've been able to integrate the Zoom, the public comment, the audiovisual, the in-person stuff. It's not really a platform discussion about Zoom and public participation. It's what does council desire? I mean, do we need to go down into the, do we want to do the Zoom streaming? Is this something that council really desires to do? What quality video do you want? Do you want a basic shot like we've got now? Do you want some camera angles that are going to require manpower to continue to run it? Do you want a full-blown production studio quality TV? I don't think you do, but I need to ask. Or we can simply maintain the current status as it is. I mean, it's an option. It's not probably the one that I suspect you guys want, but it's certainly an option. If we do go down the road of Zoom streaming, some of the anticipated changes that I think would need to be put in place to make it happen is, it would be a webinar format, where you've got the participants who are members of council or the meeting, and a section for the viewers, the participants, the ones that engaging the viewers get to watch. It would certainly change the process that you would have to go through for closed sessions. We think you may, we may have to set it up so that it would be a second meeting, you would have to leave this meeting, join another meeting for a closed session, and come back in. I don't think the webinar format has the ability to close meetings that you want. We would really strongly recommend that all public input be done via Zoom. That would be the raise hand option, a star nine option for the voice that we had done before, provide toll-free, but eliminate the free conference call-in, because that's a huge piece right now. The current process we're using to get public input, we would try to change so it will be all integrated into the Zoom platform. We would recommend streaming to YouTube as probably the platform. We would guaranteed see increased cost. I mean, the webinar option is licensed on the maximum number of attendees for the meeting. Currently, we've got about 100 attendees on our current platform. To bump that up to maximum 500 attendees would run us about $2,000 a year, maybe a little less. And it would require somebody who would be onsite for these meetings, or available to these meetings, to be a host. Whoever's coordinating or setting the meetings would be the host to manage the meeting, to start it up, to enable the video, to manage all the inputs, which would require additional staff training. But I think those are, most of these are challenges that we can certainly overcome. But these challenges are, again, technical challenges, I think we can overcome these, but ultimately, it's council's decision. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I know that council has a schedule to keep.
Yes.
This is wrapped up in the CARES Act funding issue, because the funds that are being used to do this work.
Correct.
Are CARES Act funds. So if council desired, and at risk of ruining Mr. Plowman's evening, we could wrap this up now and return to it with the new item on the agenda.
Under the...
Item D.
Yes, the regular meeting.
Yes.
I was just getting ready to suggest that, because we are running out of time, and we really need to have further discussion on this matter. Thank you, Mr. Plowman. That's been a lot of valuable information, so thank you.
Mr. Plowman, if we reach out to you later in the course of the evening, could you rejoin the meeting for the continued discussion?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Plowman, this is Councilwoman Darby.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you send me your slides? I can't see them from where I'm sitting, so just if you could, that would be great.
We'll certainly improve that before the end of the CARES Act funding, so you will be able to see them. Absolutely, I'll share these with you.
Thank you. Okay, Vice Mayor Robertson.
Well, Kurt, this didn't really involve you, but something that we can look at. The one thing that Ms. Mead said, and I'll be honest with you, it did pique my interest, is the idea that we live in the city of Stanton, but the Virginia School put the deaf and blind, and we don't have anybody that can sign or anything, somewhat blows my mind. But anyway, that's something that I might be interested in including. I know that wasn't part of Kurt's presentation.
We have assisted hearing technology in council chambers, and if we received a request for an interpreter, we would make an effort to find someone.
Thank you.
Okay, if we can discuss this further in the regular meeting, if the council members are okay with moving this discussion into the regular council meeting due to time restraints, are there any objections? Okay. All right, Mr. Rosenberg, we'll continue this conversation. Thank you, Mr. Plowman. Okay, with that, we are on break. Okay, we're now ready to go into closed session. I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session. Councilmember Holmes.
I move the council into a closed meeting for the discussion and consideration and the engagement of candidates for special counsel to advise city council concerning the recruitment and employment of, with the position of city attorney and a consultant to conduct such recruitment pursuant to code, Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A-1.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor to go into closed session. Is there a second?
No, ma'am.
Councilmember Claffey. Seconded, all right. Any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Ms. Mead. Aye. Here. Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oats.
Aye. We are now in closed session.
I move the council reconvene in an open meeting and certify to the best of each member's knowledge that only lawfully exempt public business matters were discussed, and only public business matters as identified in the closed meeting motion were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
No, ma'am.
Councilman Claffey.
I'd like to second that.
We have a second. We're waiting on the clerk of council. All right, any further discussion? Hearing done. Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oats.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. We will reconvene at 7:30. As mayor, I call this meeting of Stanton City Council to order. I note that this meeting is being broadcast over the city's cable channel and streamlined on the city's website, so that members of the public may hear our meeting. The meeting is also being recorded. I ask the clerk of council to call the roll for confirmation of those council members present for today's meeting.
Mayor Oats.
Here.
Ms. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Mr. Claffey.
Here.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Here.
Ms. Doll.
Here.
Ms. Mead.
Here.
I've confirmed all council members are present.
All right, thank you. I ask that city manager Steve Rosenberg note the participation of any city officials or colleagues, or anyone else during today's meeting by Zoom or telephone.
Madam Mayor, council members Doll and Mead are participating on the Zoom platform. Chief Technology Officer Kurt Plowman will join us on the Zoom platform, as will Yvonne Griffith, one of the applicants for a land use item on the regular meeting agenda.
Okay, thank you. Please let me mention that notice reasonable under the circumstances of this meeting and to the public contemporaneously, with the notice provided to members of city council. In addition to limited public seating in city hall, access to this meeting has been provided to the public by audio feed on the city's cable channel and the city's website. During public hearings towards the beginning of the meeting, and matters from the public on council's agenda towards the end of the meeting, public comments will be taken in person and by telephone. Members of the public who wish to participate in such matters by telephone at the appropriate time may call 844-854-2222. And when prompted, enter the access code 619-358-hashtag. Callers will be recognized in order. The public is reminded that public hearings and matters from the public is a time for councils simply to listen to your comments. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Detailed instructions for public participation by telephone have been publicized over the course of the past week on the city's website and Facebook page, and can be found now on the agenda for this meeting, and on council's website at www.ci.stanton.vaa.us/government/city-council. Also, let me highlight and have reflected in the meeting minutes that this meeting, although being conducted in person, is also being conducted by Zoom, with virtual participation of certain members of city council, given the catastrophic nature of the declared emergency and disaster related to the COVID-19 outbreak, which is part of the total circumstances, makes it impractical or unsafe to assemble in a single location. The meeting is being held consistent with the city council ordinance 2020-04 regarding continuity of government, a copy of which can be found online at www.stanton.vaa.us/ All right. Now that I've read that statement, I would like to just remind everyone, if you come into city hall, please remember to wear your mask. If you're going to the restroom, please have your mask on. Sitting out in the chambers, please keep your mask on. When you come up to speak at the microphone under matters from the public or the public hearing, you may remove your mask. We do have disinfectant wipes if you choose to wipe the microphone down. Also, to my fellow council members, if you would like to be recognized to speak up, please address the mayor, and the mayor will address you. With that, the next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you so choose, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, the next item is the invocation moment of silence, and tonight, it is Vice Mayor Robertson's turn.
Madam Mayor, I will be saying a Christian blessing and prayer. If you would like to participate, please bow your head. Our heavenly Father, as we gather here tonight, I simply ask that you provide your blessings on our president and our first lady as they recover from their COVID illnesses. Dear Lord, I ask that you be with the members of the cabinet and the government, and all of our congressmen, that you give them wisdom, that you help them to serve the public to the best of their ability. Dear Lord, I ask that you descend upon us here tonight, as we gather to perform the city's business, that you will give us the wisdom and your many blessings to perform the work that you would wish us do here. Dear Lord, I also ask that you provide your loving coverage and protection for all of our service-loving women, both at home and abroad, as they stand on that wall to protect us as a country. And I also ask, dear Lord, that you be with our police, that they are here to protect us, and they are providing us the safety that we may go about our everyday lives. And now, dear Lord, we simply ask all of these blessings in thy heavenly name.
Okay, the next item is the mayor's report. The first thing I would like to mention, all of the council members participated in a virtual Virginia Municipal League Conference. The conference was two days, it was Wednesday and today. This was the schedule, so as you can see, it was very busy. Vice Mayor Robertson mentioned prayers to our president and first lady as they are dealing with the COVID-19. Our governor, Governor Northam, spoke at the end of the conference today. He is looking very well, considering that him and his wife are also battling the COVID-19, so many prayers go out to them as well. I wanted to mention that I attended the Brownsville Grant Discussion in the West End. We are moving along on that particular grant, and hopefully, in the near future, we will be looking at some additional funding coming into the West End. I also attended this past weekend a pageant that was put on by Tony Bauer and Kurt Pross. It was to raise money for the city of Stanton and the flood damage, so it was called the Queen City Benefit Flood Pageant. And it's my understanding that they raised over $5,000 on this pageant for the city of Stanton.
Wow.
I was asked by Will Hemlick to mention the Kids Fishing Day will be this Saturday. It starts at 8:00 a.m., and it goes until 11:00, and he would like for council... It starts at 8:00 a.m. and it goes until 11:00, and he would like for council members to come and either fish, or at 11:00, if you can help, present the trophies to the kids. He would certainly appreciate it. I'm not so sure about my fishing skills, but, and I'd also like to give a shout out to the Celebration of Holiday Lights. The dinner that we had tonight was paid for by the Celebration of Holiday Lights. It's their way of saying thank you to the council for allowing them to use the park during the holidays, but really, truly, we should be the one thanking them. All right, are there any additional items by other members of City Council?
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Claffey.
The nominations committee has met and would like to make a motion tonight to appoint two people to the Economic Development Authority. First off, to appoint Philip Swann to fill the unexpired terms of Wilson Blines, beginning October 9th, 2020, and expiring March 9th, 2022. And to appoint Allison Denby to fill the unexpired term of William Sibbert, beginning October 9th, 2020, and expiring January 31st, 2023.
Okay, so we have a motion coming from a committee. We do not need a second. Is there any further discussion concerning the motions made? Hearing none. The clerk of council will please call the roll.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oats.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Are there any additional items by members of City Council members?
Mayor Oats.
Councilwoman Mead.
Yes, thank you. First, I'd just like to offer condolences to City employee Cynthia Easterling, who lost her brother Nathaniel Burris Jr. this week. And secondly, I'd like to let folks know that the Sherwood Avenue Halloween, a 30-year tradition, by consensus of the folks on the street, will not take place this year. It's a sad thing. We'll, we will miss everyone, and we hope that, that the 1,200 to 1,500 people who usually show up on Sherwood Avenue for Halloween will remember us next year and come back. Thanks.
Absolutely.
Count on that, I'm sure.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes for September 10th, 2020.
Madam Mayor, I'm trying to get to it, sorry.
Councilmember Darby.
My apologies, the iPad is not cooperating. Madam Mayor, I would just go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes from the September 10th, 2020 meeting. However, there is one correction that should be noted on line 495. There is a typographical error. The word "one" spelled "o-n-e" should read "won," W-O-N. And if we can have that correct.
All righty, so there's a motion on the floor with the correction to the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Oats, this is friend of me, and I'd like to add an additional amendment to the minutes.
Okay, do you withdraw your second?
Yeah, I withdraw.
Okay. Go right ahead, Councilwoman Mead.
Thank you. I would like to, in lines 741 through 745 of the September 10th minutes, add the full text of the comments made by Mitch Narduzzi during Matters from the Public. I have provided that text at Ms. Narduzzi's request to the clerk of council.
Okay. Councilwoman Darby, do you accept that amendment?
Yes.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion on, so we have a motion on the floor with the Sid amendments. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Vice Mayor Robertson has second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Mayor Oats.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the work session and regular meeting minutes of September 24th, 2020.
Madam Mayor, I make that motion as well.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Mayor Oats, I have an amendment to the minutes that I'd like to add.
All right, go right ahead, Councilwoman Mead.
Thank you. For the September 24th minutes, lines 624 through 625, I'd like to add the full text of the comments made by Mitch Narduzzi during Matters from the Public, and I have provided that text to the clerk of council.
Okay. Councilwoman Darby, are you okay with the amendments?
Yes, I am.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor with the amendment to add the additions into the September 24th, 2020 minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a count, there's a second by Councilmember Holmes. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Mayor Oats.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to the regular meeting agenda items. We have Agenda Item A, a public hearing in consideration of a request by Robert H. Nutt, Sr., to rezonate 430 Bridge Street from B2 General Business District to R3 Medium Density Residential District, along with Item B, a public hearing in consideration of a request by Avena P. Griffith, to rezonate 550 Calvert Street from B2 General Business District to R2 Low Density Residential District. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Rodney Rhodes, the city's senior planner, will present each of these items in order, and after which it's staff's recommendation that the public hearings be opened on both items at the same time.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor Oats, City Council members. As the mayor noted in the introduction to Item A, Mr. Nutt is requesting a rezoning of 430 Bridge Street from B2 General Business District to R3 Medium Density Residential District. This property appears to have been developed as a single-family residential over 100 years ago. It was annexed into the city in 1905, and appears on the Sanborn insurance maps in 1909. It is Zone B2 since at least the late 1960s, when the city did a comprehensive rezoning of the entire city. Mr. Nutt purchased the property in 2016 and did not become aware of the nonconforming status of the property until he applied for a building permit this past summer. And as a nonconforming building, no enlargement of the structure is permitted, so therefore he made applications to downzone the property to residential. This area has a mixture of single-family homes and commercial buildings. The future land use map, 2018 to 2040, does exist as areas high-density residential. The area right behind it is currently zoned R3 Medium Density Residential. And at the planning commission's meeting on September 17th, 2020, during the public hearing, no one spoke in opposition of the request, and on a 5 to 0 vote, the commission voted unanimously to recommend an approval of the rezoning. I would also note that we have not received any public comments from the notices that were in the paper or from any of the joint property owners' letters that we sent. I'd be glad to take any questions to have at this time.
Are there any questions for Mr. Rhodes concerning Item A, Robert Nutt? Hearing none. You may go on to Item B.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Oats. Item B is a request by Ivana Griffith for rezoning of 550 Calvert Street from B2 General Business District to R2, R2 Low Density Residential District. It's very similar in many regards to Item A. This, it appears on the Sanborn maps in 1909, appears to be developed as a single-family residence. It was also annexed into the city in 1905. Mrs. Griffith purchased the property in 2008, and now she's in the process of selling it. However, the buyers cannot obtain financing because of the nonconforming status of the property. Calvert Street is a short dead-end street. It was previously part of Greenville Avenue, however, with improvements made in 1940s, Greenville Avenue moved slightly to the west. I would also note that although this property backs up to Greenville Avenue, there is a creek between the road and the property. So as far as developing this for commercial use, it's highly unlikely that would ever happen. The conference of plan does think this area is commercial, however, there are several multifamily dwellings in that area, and we believe staff and the planning commission believes that this is a strong candidate for a future land use map change. And at the planning commission's meeting on September 17th, 2020, there was no public comments regarding this request, and the commission voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval. I'd be glad to take any questions to have at this time.
All right.
Or after the public hearing.
Okay. Are there any questions at this time concerning Item B involving Ivana Griffith? Thank you. Okay. At this time, I'm going to have a public hearing on both Item A and B, since they are similar in nature, I can have one public hearing. So when I bang the gavel, if you are for or against Items A or B, please feel free to come to the microphone and state your name, your address, and you have five minutes to state your case. When I bang the gavel, that will close the meeting out as far as the public hearing, and at that point, we will then vote. All right, with the banging of the gavel, a public hearing is open on both items. Would anyone care to speak?
Madam Mayor, just to inform council, there are no callers in the queue at all to address these items.
Okay. What about Mr. Nutt? Is he here or? Okay. Hi, Mr. Nutt. I didn't know if you wanted to say anything or not.
Well, I'm here to answer questions. Bob Nutt, live on East Beverly Street, Stanton, Virginia. This is open and shut. It's always been residential. It would not qualify as business. I'm, I tried to switch my permit to enlarge the business, but people told me, we know it's not a business. So, you know, what do I do? I can't do anything. But it's, it needs to change.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Nutt. Mr. Rosenberg, was, Ms. Griffith, was she going to join us on Zoom?
We had been informed that she might, but I don't see her, and she's not, to our knowledge, not made any effort or attempt to join.
Okay. All right. The last chance for the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed for Item A and B. I will entertain a motion for Item A only.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Darby.
I move that council approve the rezoning and adopt the ordinance as presented, rezoning 430 Bridge Street from B1 Local Business District to R3 Medium Density Residential District as recommended by the planning commission.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilmember Holmes. Any further discussion?
This is Councilwoman Mead.
Councilwoman Mead.
Just, just for clarity, I thought the property was being rezoned from B2 to R3, not B1 to R3? Was I wrong about that?
Well.
Was that your?
It says.
Yeah, we've, it appears that there's a discrepancy in the agenda briefing, so let's just get Mr. Rhodes to clarify that for council.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. It does appear to be a typo in the motion. It should be B2 General Business. I apologize for that mistake.
Okay. Councilwoman Darby, do you, I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I will definitely support this, this change. The, I've looked at all the houses on that street, and they clearly are, many of them beautiful houses. They're historic homes, and to retain the character of that neighborhood with rezoning would be a benefit to the city and to the residents of that area.
Thank you. Councilwoman Darby, do you wish to amend your motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I will amend that 430 Bridge Street be from B1 Local Business District to R, to B2.
No. From B2.
To R3.
To R3.
Sorry, I was looking at the wrong thing again. That's the amendment.
Okay, all right. So we have an amendment to the original motion, and do we have a second to allow the amendment? Okay, so we have a second to allow the amendment by Councilmember Holmes. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Mayor Oats.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. All right, I will now entertain a motion to approve Item B.
Mayor Oats.
Councilmember Holmes.
I move that council approve the rezoning and adopt the ordinance as presented, rezoning 550 Calvert Street from B2 General Business District to R2 Low Density Residential District as recommended by the planning commission.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Vice Mayor Robertson. Any further discussion?
Mayor Oats, this is Councilwoman Mead.
Yes, Councilwoman Mead.
I'd just like to note that this is a much more mixed street. There are a variety of residential and commercial uses on this, on this street, but again, it's one where there are some beautiful historic homes that it would be wonderful to preserve, and I believe it would be a street that could offer housing for low and medium-income citizens. So I will be supporting this measure as well.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Mayor Oats.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, great. Item C is a consideration of a U.S. Environmental Protection Agency Brownsville Grant Application. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor and members of council, Billy Vaughn, the city's Community Development and Economic Development Director, will present this item.
Hello, Mr. Vaughn.
Hello. Madam Mayor, members of council, good evening. We are back before you again tonight, and this time we're looking for authorization from council to apply for, and if awarded, accept an EPA Brownfields grant in the amount of $300,000. As you're well aware, many of you have attended the two community meetings that we held to get input from citizens on the West End. You have in your packet a 10-page grant application. That if you'd like, we could summarize it for you, but I would like to say that we have Laurie Crowe from Draper, Aiden, with us again tonight, who has been leading this process and project. So if there are any questions regarding the details of the application, Laurie would be more than happy to try to address that.
Are there any questions or comments by council members? Are there any questions or comments by councilmembers? I think we're good. Thank you. All right. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor Oaks.
Councilmember Holmes.
I move that city council authorize application for an acceptance of, if awarded, a U.S. Government Environmental Protection Agency Community One Brownsfield Assessment Grant as proposed.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
No.
We have a second.
Council, councilmember Mead, second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Clathy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Dahl.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Yes, indeed. Thank you. All right. The next item was added on. It's item D. It's an update on allocation of CARES Act relief funds. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Beauregard, the assistant city manager, will introduce this item, and just to remind you, we'll have two components to this item. One will be the subject that Ms. Beauregard addresses, and then we'll transition back to the subjects that we were discussing with the chief technology officer, Kurt Plowman, during the work session.
Okay. Thank you. So first of all, I'm, I do apologize for bringing this to you in this timeline. So we need to make a decision quickly about this particular item, and I wish we could have this discussion in the larger context of the CARES funds, but because of the timing of this, we needed to have this discussion tonight. So around September 22nd, Chief Garber sent a request or asked if I would accept a request for PPE for the firefighters. He did submit something, and shortly after that request was received and we found out there was a pretty tight timeline, I asked him to work with Chad Horvath in procurement to get that timeline nailed down, to see when we needed to bring this to you all. It's an expensive procurement, it's just over $200,000, so I didn't feel that it was right to approve that until I spoke to council and received some guidance. So the gear needs to start the ordering process in order to be delivered by December 30th next week. And again, I didn't want to do anything until we had a chance to discuss this. So Chief Garber and I went back and forth a few times this week. I've had a lot of questions about the request. I did reach out to, and by the way, this is like traditional structural firefighting protection, like PPE, like what you see them wearing, just so you get an idea of what we're talking about. So I did talk to our external auditor because I had a question about whether it was really eligible for CARES funds, because in the way she read the language and provided the guidance to me, is that that type of gear doesn't directly respond to the COVID emergency? And the PPE mentioned in the guidelines, in her opinion at least, is not COVID, is COVID PPE, which is different than the structural, the firefighting gear. And I'm sure Chief Garber's here and he will also answer questions about that. So this is how it can be interpreted by the auditor, and there is some language in the guidelines, I'll just point out to everybody. So eligible expenses do, public health expenses do include, you know, medical and protective supplies, including sanitizing products, personal protective equipment for medical personnel, et cetera. And again, the assumption she's making is that should be designed for COVID specifically, such as gowns, N95 masks, gloves, things like that. Another part, just I'll quote to you quickly, there's a part in here that says any other COVID-19 related expenses reasonably necessary for the function of government that satisfy the fund's eligibility criteria, and that seems like a kind of a catch-all, but again, the way she's interpreting that is that it needs to be directly related to COVID-19 and into the response for that. So that's how she's interpreting this. Chief Garber did tell me that Franklin County purchased 330 new sets of turnout gear with CARES, and they did. And I spoke to their finance director. The nuance with that, though, is that they only purchased second sets of turnout gear, and the rationale there being if your first set is contaminated, you had a second set and you wouldn't be out of service. So that's why they felt comfortable purchasing the turnout gear with CARES money. I wish we had more time to figure this out, and you know as well as I do, the times we've come to you, how confusing this has been at times and the guidelines. If you recall, when we came to you very early on, well, back in July, and spoke about the furloughs, the public safety furloughs that we use CARES funds to eliminate, at the time, we were told by our auditor it would probably be allowed. We went ahead and did that. She felt comfortable with that, but if the rules changed, then we would get dinged for that. So I kind of see this as a similar situation, but maybe in reverse order where she's telling us, I don't think the guy, that fits the guidelines, but Franklin County did something similar, but in that case, their justification was they were only purchasing a second set of turnout gear for that purpose. So that's where we stand, and we were in, you know, I, again, I don't, I'm sorry, we have to bring this to you outside of the conversation we're going to have in two weeks over the rest of the CARES money, because the, you know, a decision tonight will impact what's left or not of those CARES funds that we have. As you can see from the spreadsheet I sent, you know, if we do everything on this sheet, there's a deficit of over $300,000, and clearly, we have to figure out a way to prioritize this. So I will leave the, I will stop talking right now, and I know Chief Garber is here to answer any questions, if you have any for him, but that's where we stand. So again, I wish timing is everything, and I just wish we had more time to try and sit down and figure this out.
All right. Fire Chief Garber, would you like to make a statement?
Yes, ma'am. So just to clarify, the rationale that Franklin County used is our exact same rationale. So maybe we missed that in our communications back and forth, but it's to provide that second set of gear because our personnel are getting contaminated daily. They don't know, and most of the time, they don't even know when they're being contaminated. So they're immediately having to wash this gear because that's what they wear. We have the gowns, but the gowns are in short supply. So we only wear the gowns, our personnel only wear the gowns when they know they're going through a known COVID case. The turnout gear actually protects them better because it is a moisture barrier such as Gore-Tex that protects any bloodborne or airborne pathogens of penetrating through that material. So it's actually better protection. The gowns are such short supply right now, we save those for our high-risk responses. Everything else, they are in their proper PPE turnout gear to include other things such as safety goggles and things like that. So it's, the rationale is this gear is getting cleaned every single shift. It only takes a half hour to wash it, but it takes almost 72 hours to dry because it's so thick. We cannot put it in a dryer, it has to air dry naturally. So by the time they come back to work, it's not dry. So that's one of the reasons for a second set of gear to be able to go right into that dry gear. And a lot of other things about firefighting that we're not talking about here, but you started me speaking before.
Sure. All right.
May I, may I ask you a question, Chief Garber?
Please.
Just, I'm sorry if I did this understand. So when we were going back and forth about the numbers and the number of gear, the volume, just to clarify for everyone, so is my understanding that the second sets that you needed, so the total is 54, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Am I incorrect in thinking that out of that 54, 18 already do have a second set? Is that accurate? But that's what I thought I saw, so that's why maybe the confusion is.
There is 11, there's, so 18 of our part-timers have no second set of gear.
Right.
18 full-time people have no second set of gear.
Right.
Because they've been employed less than five years. Of the remaining 18, only 11 of those sets are five years or over five years of age. Seven of those are only less than five years. So at 10 years, we have to discard the gear anyway. We're no longer permitted to use it after 10 years. It has to be lamped.
Okay. So the original number I was coming up with was the 36. That was purely not, I wasn't even thinking about the replacement period, that it was the 36, correct? So you agree with that? Okay.
So we could put, we could put everyone on the street with two sets of gear today with the purchase of 36 additional sets of turnout gear. Is that, is that correct?
With the current specification that we're using, it would take the 54 because we updated our specification, which is a higher level of protection for it.
54.
Which would give you the 54.
Okay. All right. And, and you're saying that because if we didn't do the other 18, it wouldn't be the same specification of the new gear?
That's correct.
All right. Are there any questions by councilmembers?
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Darby.
Chief Garber, when was the last set of turnout gear purchased?
Less than 30 days ago.
So you were explaining the timeline, but it's been, how, I mean, if we have 18 paid staff that have no second turnout gear.
Correct.
How long have they been employed without that second set of turnout?
Five years or less, because we try to replace on a five-year incremental purchasing, which is stagger.
So I said, I'm sorry. No.
Councilmember Holmes.
Ms. Beauregard, would, would the 36 units or would they, would they be covered by CARES, and then possibly we just might have to pay for the?
So that was the, that was the logic behind what Franklin County did. So if those 30, 36 do not have a second pair of, or second turnout gear set, then that would be similar to what Franklin County did, that they purchased those sets as purely second sets. So, you know, that's one, that's one piece of it. So if we wanted to order the whole 54, you know, I don't know if, I don't know if the auditor would look at that and say, well, some of this could be covered and the other part wouldn't. I don't know, and they're the ones at the end of the day that are going to make the decision about that.
So there's a possibility they could kick the whole order out just because?
Anything is possible. I don't know. You know, and when I asked the auditor, had she seen any other requests like this? She said she has not, but I also don't think ever, anybody else is really speaking to her in the detail we are either, so she's not hearing specific requests. We go to her quite often and ask for her opinion on things, and so she couldn't really say, you know, who else is doing this, and I only knew about Franklin County because Chief Garber told me that they did, and so that was the only reason I knew about that one.
This is Councilwoman Mead.
Councilwoman Mead.
Thank you. Chief Garber, have you requested this equipment through the regular budget process and it, and it was kicked out or denied?
Yes, ma'am. This is part of our normal operating budget replacement process.
Uh huh.
So our, this past year, we had, or the previous FY '20, we had a $32,000 operating budget for wearing apparel, which also includes the daily uniforms that our personnel wear, not just the protective clothing. And with this year, with the budget reductions that we had implemented, we had to reduce that budget by almost 30%, down to $20,000. So it's been part of our budget for as long as I've been employed.
Okay.
And when I sent the response out to that, I just said it wasn't at the $200,000 level, that they're replacing it as they can throughout the year with those smaller dollar amounts.
And this is again, Councilwoman Mead, it would, could you work with half of that amount of fire turnout gear and replace others on the sort of regular schedule going forward?
It could probably be done. It would have to be a fairly difficult process to figure out what needs to be replaced and what needs to be updated to the most safest specification that we're using now. Believe it or not, we changed from a tan colored gear to a black gear, which the black is actually more visible to people in the day and the nighttime versus the tan. So we have people in black gear and tan gear right now, so it looks a little odd at times.
I don't, how, how does that, how does the black versus tan impact the, the safety issue?
Very simply, if you're driving down the street, you can see a firefighter in black turnout gears down there better than a person in tan turnout gear. And street safety is one of our number one priorities for our personnel.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Darby.
I'm not sure if this is for Chief Garber or for Ms. Beauregard, but can you just refresh my, my memory on what, what has the, the fire and rescue department received from the CARES Act money so far?
I'll be happy to answer that.
Go ahead.
Obviously, the furloughs that we're taking care of, very appreciative of that. The second item were the Zoll Auto Pulse Automatic CPR Chest Compression Devices we received, probably one of the very few fire departments that have that technology, and we do not have them in service yet, we just received them, but that was about a $67,000 purchase, and without the CARES funding, that we probably never would have been able to purchase that.
That's right.
Okay. So the question for the council is to either allow 36 of the fire turnout gear or to allow Any last thoughts, Fire Chief Garber?
Obviously, my opinion is 54, but I'm not a person casting votes.
Well, your opinion is of value.
The 54 makes this, is a head-to-toe, totally updated, the safest equipment we can put our people in tomorrow. And that's what, that's my job, is to keep our personnel safe, and that's, that's why I'm here tonight.
Counsel, this is Councilwoman Mead.
Councilwoman Mead.
Mayor Oaks, I think the question goes beyond whether we buy 36 or 54, and goes to what else are we not going to buy as a result? Because we have a, I'm sorry, was the short, yeah, the, the deficit is 354,000, so if we use 100,000 for fire turnout gear, and I'm not, you know, I'm not questioning Chief Garber's assessment of the risk and the need for this equipment at all, I'm just saying, we, we need to also look at these other items that are on, on this to be considered list and, and, and consider those as well as the fire turnout gear and the implications of that.
That's fair enough. All right.
Mayor.
Yes.
Maybe a biased opinion here, but I will say that the CARES Act funding was established to provide protective materials for your first response.
Okay.
That was the primary.
Julie Nada. Vice Mayor Robertson.
Ms. Beauregard, let me, I'm just looking at these figures here.
Sure.
Okay. 203,000 for fire turnout gear, 54 sets. Right above that is 233,407, and it's reserved for future anticipated expenses. What might that be?
Well, exactly as it suggests, it's, it gives us some flexibility, so that number is flexible. You know, we put it out there for total transparency, it's like a little, it's like a contingency.
Slush fund type thing.
Frankly, I wouldn't call it a slush fund. It's a bad, bad word, but it does offer some flexibility. We do have a few more months, we don't, some things do come up at last minute that we might need to, to deal with quickly, that they're usually not the high-cost things, but they need a decision. And so there is some flexibility there, certainly. You know, I think there's flexibility in some of these other items as well, potentially. Again, I wish we were kind of having this larger discussion in two weeks, because we were going to put this all together for you with a nice package and have some decisions made, especially when we talk about the nonprofit assistance. So that, that's, that reserve is definitely just what it says it is. There's nothing dedicated to that right this moment.
Yeah.
Ms. Beauregard, this is Councilwoman Mead. So that reserve for future anticipated expenses, is that like the contingency, like, like the, the $3,000 for Plexi, Plexiglas dividers for golf carts? Is that the kind of thing you're talking about?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions?
This one.
Okay, go ahead. Councilmember Holmes.
Ms. Beauregard, so you're saying that if we okay all this, we're going to have the 354,000?
I'm not asking you to okay all this tonight. That's not.
So we just have to kind of?
We just need guidance at this moment on the turnout gear. In two weeks, we'll have, once we get some guidance with that, we'll have a discussion in two weeks about the rest of that. And we can probably come up with something balanced to get you to zero. I just wanted to show you for the purposes of tonight where we stood with the request and the funding leftovers. So just like any budget process, we want to come with you with some recommendations as we get, you know, December 30th is right around the corner, so.
So at this point, are you looking for a vote concerning the fire turnout gear? Or are you just looking for guidance?
Well, something affirmative or not would help because as of Monday, they need to start their process.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor.
So that we're kind of, we're at a, you know, at a brick wall.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
All right. Vice Mayor Robertson.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that City Council go ahead and approve the 54 turnout gear to purchase for the fire department to get it in before December 31st. I, at this point, am unwilling to put our fire department, any of our members at risk. They're out there protecting us, and if one of them gets sick because we didn't provide one of them some turnout gear, I'm not sure I live with that.
This is Carolyn Doll.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this something that would be more of a head nod versus an actual motion and vote, I'm thinking?
Well, Ms. Beauregard just asked for affirmative action. Well, we have a motion on the floor. So is there a second?
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Darby.
I'll second that motion.
So we have a second. Is there any further discussion?
I just have a few questions, Mayor.
Councilmember Holmes.
So what we spend here is actually going to make us have to cut some of these other items, right?
Well, even if that item wasn't in here, you'd still have a deficit, so you'd have to cut other items. So that is correct.
Okay.
And Ms. Beauregard, on these other items, I mean, there's things in here probably that once we get a more detailed report from you and we have questions, we may find out that there are some areas that cuts can be made in.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, that is correct. Yeah. We can make, we'll make adjustments as we go along.
Any further comments or questions?
Yes. Go ahead, Ms. Mead.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Mead.
Yeah, I'm going to vote in favor of the turnout gear as requested, but I do so because I'm hopeful that there will be additional relief coming from Washington for local governments to deal with the effects of COVID-19. And so I'm doing that for that purpose. And I hope that our firefighters will stay safe and healthy. You know, it's a risky job, and we need to support what they do. Thank you.
All right, go ahead, Assistant.
Forgot what I was going to say. That's okay. That's okay.
All right. I too will be supporting the motion. I trust Fire Chief Garber's opinion on this matter and his expertise. I know that we all support our first responders and safety first. So with that, Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, yes.
Yeah, I didn't know I was going to say. The only thing I was going to say to kind of wrap this up is, you know, as we get beyond the end of the year and start working with our auditor, we'll certainly keep you all updated if somehow this does not pass muster at the end of the day. You know, certainly we're hoping it will, but just like, kind of like the furlough discussion that we had, but if any of these things don't, we'll certainly be reporting that out to you. And, you know, we'll have to figure out another way to pay for some of these things potentially, but we're hoping that it does suffice. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Fire Chief Garber.
So we will, we'll come back to you in two weeks with a larger discussion of the other new expenses that are presented on the spreadsheet that Ms. Beauregard shared with you earlier today and, you know, try to wrap up this process as best we can at that time with the December 30 deadline approaching quickly. And with that, I suggest that we pivot back to.
That's where I'm going into.
The discussion about the technology issues.
So next, thank you, thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. Next on the agenda is Item E. We are now going to continue our discussion concerning the electronic communications meeting platforms. Mr. Rosenberg.
So I think what a useful starting point would be for Mr. Plowman to share his screen again and to go back to his Ask slide.
I am doing that as we speak. If you give me a second, I wasn't prepared for that.
You were too busy listening to the Fire Chief.
Absolutely. Here we go. There you go, sir.
Thank you. So these were, I think, the three alternatives that Mr. Plowman identified during the work session, really to sort of, to change what we're doing now to actually stream the Zoom video, possibly on the YouTube platform. To, secondly, to transition to a studio-quality video presentation. Or third, to maintain our current practices. And I recognize that none of these alternatives may achieve what individual council members desire or what council as a body desires. So really, what we would like to do is to hear from you all what you are looking for in the way of delivery of the meetings to the public. And if we can get a sense of what council members are interested in, if there's an interest in making changes, we can go and we can do some of the legwork to further explore those possibilities and then come back to you and share some options with you. I think Ms. Mead, at the introduction of this item during the work session, talked specifically in terms of accessibility issues to members of our community who may be hearing impaired or vision impaired. And so, you know, that's one set of issues that could be explored. So we really would like to hear from you all about what your vision is of the manner in which these meetings are to be presented. And, you know, keeping in mind, I think as Mr. Plowman shared, that we are pushing these meetings out in a far greater volume than I think any locality in the region. You know, other localities are focused on the meetings of their governing bodies. And we are presently supporting, you know, virtually every board and commission in the city and making those meetings available remotely in some manner to the members of those boards and commissions and to the public generally. So again, you know, I think if you all can give us a vision of what you would like to see, we're prepared to do some legwork and to come back to you.
Okay, so for everyone out in the audience, this is not an issue that we will be voting on tonight. The city staff is simply looking for direction from the city council members. So with that, Councilmember Claffey.
Madam Mayor, well, actually, I want to ask Kurt. The last time I was in this room with Kurt Plowman, we had talked about putting screens in this room to eliminate the problem of having the video displayed behind us and also to help the people in the audience see what's going on. Also to allow Amy to be able to see what's going on on the screens. I mean, there was some advantage. So my question to you, Kurt, is where in the Ask is the TV screens that you're thinking about putting in this room? Is that part of Zoom streaming, studio-quality video, or is that just an update to the current?
That's not really part of, that's not really part of the Ask, sir. We're planning on doing that already. Some of those discussions were already happening pre-COVID, so, because we understand the limitations of that room. So some of the CARES money we're spending is to improve that with better projection, better opportunities for folks at the DIAS to actually see. So that's part of the, we're pretty comfortable with where we need to go with that component. That's going to happen.
Could you give a perspective cost of those, the Ask, the Zoom streaming? How much is that going to cost us? How much is studio-quality video going to cost us?
The Zoom streaming, if we increase, if we change the method that we're using right now, we're probably be looking at a cost of another 1,000 or 2,000 a year to add additional capacity to our Zoom account. If we move into studio quality, which I don't believe has ever been asked for, but if we get into that, we're looking at manpower to run that kind of stuff because that's a TV quality production. So I think that's probably going too far, but part of me is actually, you know, you have to be concerned where, once we start doing one, we end up doing something else.
This is Councilwoman Mead.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So I just want to, first of all, I was remiss in making my comments during the work session in not acknowledging the incredible work that Kurt and his team have done to pivot so rapidly into this environment of COVID-19. And I just can't say how much I respect and appreciate the work that you all have done, Kurt.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yep. Secondly, I want to say that I am completely indifferent as to the platform that we use. It could be Zoom, it could be WebEx, it could be, I don't, I'm indifferent. And I would leave that completely in your hands, Mr. Plowman, as to the choice of platform. My desire is to increase accessibility to our public meetings by members of the 25,000 residents of the city of Stanton. There, and again, I want to say that I would trust you, Kurt, to make that decision about what is the best platform to do that. But it's about, for me, it's about accessibility. And, you know, as Stanton is the home of the Virginia School for the Deaf and Blind, we have a significantly higher population of folks with those impairments than probably other communities do. I just want to make sure that everyone gets access to our meetings.
And I understand that. We strove on our website redesign, we did a couple of years ago. ADA compatibility was a huge component of that. We are very proud that we are one of the first localities in this part of the state to offer text-to-911 services for our public safety side. So we truly understand where you're coming from as far as trying to provide that. We're looking for options and how we can do that with our video, with our audio posting right now to YouTube after the meeting goes. We are looking at trying to get some closed captioning options built into that so we can get some text out of that. So these are some challenges, but closed captioning can be a very big struggle for a lot of folks.
I hear you, but for our hearing impaired, that's just critical. It's, anything else is kind of a non-starter, to be honest with you.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any additional? Councilmember Holmes.
Go ahead, Karen, go ahead.
This is Terry Holmes. Kurt, do you think that you actually probably need another technician? I mean, you said you had over 80 hours in its building with more and more meetings. I mean, would another technician make it a lot easier?
That's part of my concern is the manpower that's beginning to, you know, that consumes some of these. I said, by the time we finish this year, I'm going to have probably half a full-time employee tied up in production of streaming meetings. You know, we're an IT, we're here to solve problems, so we understand that. We're not complaining about it. But it's not a sustainable model moving forward unless there's somebody who's dedicated to running meetings, unless we can get it in a format that's simple enough. And that's really my desire, to make it a simple format that's easy to use. And we're still not finding that right platform yet. That's why we're looking to council to get some expectations. You know, if we find a solution, I want to make sure it meets council's expectations of what they're looking for in a meeting. Plus, in addition to council's expectations, I've got a bunch of other boards and commissions I need to be able to accommodate as well. So I appreciate the offer there, or at least the question. Manpower is certainly an issue, but we're hoping to find a solution that accomplishes all the goals without requiring a person or two or three to be involved with these meetings.
Ms. Beauregard, would it be possible to use CARES funding to maybe hire a part-time person?
The problem is that funding expires on December 30th.
Yeah, so it wouldn't really do much good. Thank you. Sorry.
This is Carolyn Doll.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Doll.
I'm in favor of whatever, the simplest platform you can find to make this as user-friendly as possible to hopefully keep at a minimum the extra manpower needed. And I don't think we're making movies. So even though you may be a perfectionist, just don't worry about, you know, how many camera shots, et cetera, we're going to do, as long as it's visible to people, you know, so that they can see. That's, that seems fine to me.
Thank you, and I appreciate that because that's helpful feedback. We don't want to set the expectation this is going to look like a standard Zoom meeting if we can't accomplish that at the end. So we're trying to improve the video that you're currently seeing in the Zoom meeting, but it won't be the standard Zoom meeting with everybody having their own picture unless we find some really amazing technology soon.
And the other thing I would add is that I know some softwares are out there that will do the closed captioning, you know, real time, and it may not be 100%, but it's way better than what we have now.
All right. Vice Mayor Robertson.
Yeah, I just wanted, Kurt, I just wanted to say, I agree with Carolyn full-heartedly that I don't think we need to get into a major production. I agree with Brenda when she said, I think we need to really, being the home of Virginia School for the Deaf and Blind, we need to make the meetings as accessible to them as possible. But I'm also looking at, evidently, we have $200,000 here that I'm assuming that you're saying that we can spend on cancel chamber technology for that. That I think we need to try to keep it within the CARES Act. Because as far as spending, I, right now, would not be in a favor of spending a lot of money other than what's in this CARES Act, because we've got a whole lot more stuff that we've got to take care of. Seven million-dollar pipeline, possibility of looking at ways to mitigate flooding. You know, it's just a lot of things that we need to be, we need to look at our dollars and cents. And I, for one, wouldn't be in favor of going whole hog and just spending money to make it, let's say, a big production. If we can achieve what we need to achieve, Kurt, by using that 200,000 or whatever, or if you can come in less than that, that's even better. But, you know, as long as we can, as long as we can make it more accessible to our citizens and especially for our deaf and blind, I'm all for it.
And Kurt, whole hog is an IT term.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
We understand.
Mayor Oaks, this is Councilwoman Mead. Yeah, thank you. Just make a gentle and respectful point of order that the vice mayor's reference to myself and Carolyn by our first names is inappropriate.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I'm not gonna make that mistake again, Ms. Mead.
All right, thank you. All right. Are there any additional comments or questions so we can give Mr. Plowman direction? I, too, would like to say that I'm, I'm interested in the city moving forward with the closed caption. And Councilmember Dole had mentioned the software. Mr. Plowman, I'm not sure if you are aware of it, or if you've looked into it. I'm sure you probably are aware of some sort of software that deals with closed caption.
We've looked at a couple of different platforms. A lot of what we have seen, unfortunately, is charging by the minute, which can add up for, for a lengthy meeting. Some of, we, we do have some solutions we're still investigating. There, there's a lot on the plate with, with this project. So we are certainly looking at that. But I'm, I'm hearing loud and clear that that's certainly something that all council members are interested in pursuing.
Well, and I'm also interested in having a councilmember Darby to be able to see the screen and what's going on with the Zoom. But it's my understanding that that's not part of the ask, that that's already in the works.
That, that's already the given. Let's put it that way, yes.
All right. So do you have the direction you need, Mr. Plowman and Mr. Rosenberg?
I, I feel comfortable. We understand where, where council's desires are, yes.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. All right. With that, we will now move on. But before we do, I know that he left the room, but I did want to recognize the fact that school board member Bob Boyle was here in attendance, and we appreciate the fact that he is attending our council meetings on a regular basis. Next on the agenda is matters from the city manager, Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have one item this evening. Before I share that item with you, let me remind the public that the next item on the agenda is matters from the public. And this would be a good time for those members of the public interested in participating to call, to be placed in the queue. The number to do so is 844-854-2222. And when prompted, enter the access code for the meeting, which is 619-358, followed by the pound sign. And the, the one item that I have for council this evening is with great pleasure to introduce to you our new Director of Public Works, Jeff Johnston. And Mr. Johnston has a few words that he would like to share with you.
Welcome.
Welcome, sir.
Good to have you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. Madam Mayor, members of council, I appreciate the opportunity to introduce myself to you and to the citizens of Stanton. It is an honor to be part of this great team and to be entrusted with such an outstanding Public Works department. It may sound trite, maybe just sad, but municipal Public Works Director is the job I've wanted to have since I was a child. And almost two weeks in, it has been everything nine-year-old me hoped it would be. I'm not smart enough just yet to talk about specific issues, but I would like to give you a general sense of how I will approach my job. I firmly believe that public service is a public trust, and that will be the foundation of everything we do. People may not like what we do in Public Works, but it is imperative that they trust what we do in Public Works, which is why I'm also a big proponent of transparency. I want to let people know what is going on, because I know if we leave any blanks in the narrative, we will not control how people fill them in. It becomes the world's worst game of mad libs, and the result is never helpful. And besides that, the story of the men and women in Public Works who work each and every day for all, every Stanton citizen, business and visitor deserves to be told, and it is my job to tell it in a compelling way. Finally, and perhaps most importantly, I believe that despite the sometimes technical aspects of the Public Works business, all problems are people problems. And that is the lens with which we will look at every problem, and that is the yardstick by which we will measure every answer. Thank you again for this opportunity, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments? Councilwoman Darby?
I was just saying, welcome. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Welcome to Stanton.
Yes, welcome. You do have some very large shoes to fill. However, it sounds like you're up to the task, so welcome.
Thank you, ma'am.
This is Carolyn Dole.
Councilwoman Dole.
I, I just wanted to add that you may not be aware, but Stanton has for years been famous for its extraordinary snow removal. So you, that's where the pressure's on.
I, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
So true, so true. All right. Again, thank you. All right.
I have nothing further. Yes, thank you.
All right. Our next item is matters from the public. We will accept callers from Zoom first, and then we will accept the audience. Please remember to state your name, your address, and you have five minutes to speak. And please keep your comments in a general term rather than specifically aimed at a particular council member. That would be appreciated. All right. Mr. Rosenberg.
All right. Yes. Is the caller whose number ends in 79 on the line?
Yeah.
Please state your name and address and address your comments to council.
This is Aaron Barmer. I'm at my house here in Stanton, Virginia. The first thing I want to, the first thing I wish to acknowledge is that Mark, I think it's probably, you know, it's nice that y'all are attempting to be collegial with one another for a change, but I, I think, Mark, that you should probably make a very strong habit of addressing your colleagues by their titles since they were elected for those titles. You know, I, it just seems like a, a point of order worth, worth mentioning. It, I, it seems a little inappropriate to address, mostly things like you'd like to do, but the women on council, namely members Dole and Mead, you like to address them by their first names rather than councilmembers Dole and Mead. I think you should, you should probably change that. The second thing I'd like to say, this is actually directed at Mr. Rosenberg. Sir, the latest meeting minutes for Maryland Regional Jail are dated June 2020. Kind of wondering if, if, you know, I may get out of the reply. I'll be following up to you this week. It seems like those meetings are not getting updated frequently enough. It seems like that oversight by the public into what's happening at the jail is not up to snuff. It is definitely worth mentioning, yet again, that people are flapping at jail with COVID running around, and they're bringing more people in there. It is also worth mentioning that, what was it, in September, the middle of September, a 19-year-old inmate died at the jail because he was able to hang himself. That's inappropriate, obviously. That's tragic for the family. That is a failure on the, on the part of jail, jail supervisors and jail authority board. It's not the first time an inmate died there. And there's not very much transparency about how much COVID is in the jail. If it's anything like other Virginia jails and prisons, it's bad. So you guys need to, like, make an effort to remember that people have family members that are in there that can't speak for themselves, and it's hard for them to call out to the meeting. And, you know, you need to change that, because what, what are you doing? Like, what are you doing? These people are in jail. They can't leave. There's COVID in there. People are hanging themselves. People are trying to commit suicide. You don't have a solution for that, do you? The last thing I'd like to say about the Zoom issue, it's a Zoom subscription. It don't cost that much. Go to Walmart and buy a webcam. I'm sure any member there could learn how to total it all and run it if Mr. Rosenberg or Ms. Boerger were not, you know, in the room. Your technology officer definitely need an additional staff member. So why don't you create a job in Stanton and hire somebody to make you accessible to everyone? You're just trying to hide when you screw up to make sure that we can see when you screw up. I want to see your favors. I want to see your gestures. I want to, I want to make sure there's catchings. Whatever you gotta do, it ain't gonna cost that much. Make it happen. Quit hemming and hawing about it, Clapley and Robinson, and get on board. That's all. That'll be it.
Thank you. Next caller.
There are no more callers, Madam Mayor.
All right. At this time, we will take speakers from the audience. Welcome.
Mayor Oaks.
Hey, Rusty.
Name's Rusty Ashby, 917 Palatine Street, Stanton, Virginia. I came here to talk about a couple of things tonight, but first I want to say something. I was brought up to receive respect. You give respect. And personally, if I was Mayor Oaks and I wasn't addressed as a mayor, I'd mute the damn button. You know, it goes both ways, and everybody in Stanton knows what's going on here. Let's, let's deal with it. Get over it. Act like professionals. But I get tired of hearing them talk about this when they're doing the same thing. As far as Zoom meeting, first, get your butts in the chairs or do whatever. The Zoom meeting, to me, is secondary. Citizens want to know that their representatives are serving them here. I watch the screen. Half the time, you don't see anybody. The comments from the public, they're gone. I mean, let's, let's be, you know, we're adults. Let's deal with this. Didn't plan on saying that, but when I heard them chastise you, when I say, Aaron, here, this is so-and-so, it never addressed you, not right. I'm sure I've got other people in Stanton that agree with that. This morning, we saw something about the courthouse. If you go back in the records, back in the 90s at least, probably before that, the courthouse was a big issue. It's gonna be a big issue. What, this is a suggestion. The issue is, everyone wants to make it political. When I was on the Board of Supervisors, they took us on a tour of the courthouse, and it was terrible. And what we were told is our responsibilities to make sure those records, years of records were protected for the citizens. I agree that picture in the paper was terrible. One of the suggestions I have is get the politicians out of it. I told one of you, stay away from that courthouse, because it's a killer to get reelected on. What you got, get some citizens together on both from the city and the county, and come up with something that's workable, and that's gonna involve money, could involve moving, but whatever it is, you guys, when they throw that picture on the bus, on the newspaper, you're throwing it under the bus. The county's saying, well, this is what we gotta do. I remember back in the Reversion days, one phrase I'll never forget, Stanton and Waynesboro, Augusta County are independently dependent upon each other. Gotta work together. I mean, that's why it is. You don't have, you don't have enough money. Nobody has enough money. But there are solutions to every problem out there if you, if you get off the political stance and work together. Might not be what anybody wants, but to sit here and criticize you guys because you don't want this, and Board of Supervisors, oh, they, what, where's it lit? It's been 20 years and nothing's happened. One day, that courthouse is gonna sink or be flooded terrible, and then what they're gonna do? Why didn't you do something? You know, it's, I'm not being critical of y'all. I want people to think about, it's not just your problem. It's something, it's a responsibility. It's not an issue. So that's really, I just, let's, let's have some, you know, common decency here. And if someone's gonna criticize somebody, then criticize everybody that needs to be criticized, and try to do something to work together to make this community and this whole area as great as it's always been.
Thank you.
Thank you, and God bless every one of you.
Thank you, Ros.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Susan Ashby. I live at 917 Palatine Street, Stanton, Virginia. I just want to say, I haven't been hearing anything about the Second Amendment lately, and I was wondering when y'all were gonna get on this and, you know, make a decision one way or another about the city of Stanton. I was just, you know, curious if y'all were gonna bring that up anytime soon.
We did at the work session.
We just didn't hear it in public.
It should have been on the speaker, but you may not have heard it on the TV station.
So when is the meeting on that?
To be determined. Sometime in October.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else?
Jasmine Brooks, 930 Sudbury Street. On August 27th, I presented to the council a thorough presentation on the racial disparities that are evident in Stanton City housing, policing, education, and employment sectors. Using data available to the public, we have demonstrated inequities that can certainly be mitigated, adequate resources are invested in doing the work necessary for our city to live up to the ideals outlined in the statement offered earlier this year on racial disparities. An opportunity for the council to stand on those words has been presented through the My Brothers and Sisters Keeper Initiative to include a sanction committee whose sole task is to address the issues outlined by the data. On August 27th, it was the decision of the council to speak with members of the school board, though the two entities are distinctly different and hold a different responsibility in manifesting the My Brothers and Sisters Keeper program. It was said that after speaking with the school board, we would hear back from the council with an update. Having heard nothing up to this point, we are back to request an update on plans to move our city forward with a more concerted effort to address the inequities outlined in the presentation shared in August. I expect that the statement written by the previous council and affirmed by the current council won't reveal itself to be an empty platitude, but a commitment to the residents of Stanton made evident by your response to the My Brothers and Sisters Keeper proposal and a sanction committee on equity achievement opportunity. Understanding that matters from the public do not necessarily yield space for an immediate response, tonight's request is that the council respond to our August ask on or before the date of the next city council meeting to be held on Thursday, October 22nd. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you. My name is Deborah Kushner. I live at 1311 North Augusta Street. I thank the city council for bringing home the dire need for civic engagement for all citizens. You're helping this Stanton newbie get quickly up to speed on many matters. And can, big congratulations on the CARES Act grant for tech funding. It's wonderful that people with disabilities will be able to stay abreast of city council goings-on and keep many safe from COVID exposure. People who want to express their opinions but rightly fear this airless small room is unsafe will all be able to see the charts and exhibits displayed to understand details of presentations, and will be able to see who is speaking and watch their expressions. If you're truly here to represent your constituents and serve in the best interest of the city, why wouldn't you want the city to see and hear your discussions and decisions? I did work for 12 years in the engineering department of a major market broadcasting station, and putting on live multicamera shows was challenging, but we don't need flash. We need a simple setup with closed captioning and the ability to view exhibits, period. About Zoom and seeing these meetings, this all stems from the council's, some council members' insistence on meeting in person. However, each meeting here is prefaced with detailed, sane rationale as to special procedures put in place to safeguard people at this meeting, and why phoning in is accepted, and why some council members attend via Zoom. The council members who attend via Zoom are safeguarding you. Is the magnitude of 210,000 American deaths lost on you? More than 3,303 deaths in Virginia? This ignorance and dismissal of this public health emergency spreads false hope, disinformation as sacrilege for the victims and their loved ones. Being here in this chambers endangers each person present and their families, and each person who comes within close contact of them. Holding a public forum, oh, sorry, I couldn't print this out. One moment. Regarding the Second Amendment sanctuary movement, holding a public forum on this issue is clearly intended for a public display of armaments to intimidate the general public from showing up. We don't need another gun rally. Please, please stick to issues that will improve Please, please stick to issues that will improve the lives of our residents. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Hi, welcome.
Nitch Narduzzi, 130 South Jefferson. I'm here tonight in person to speak mainly on the issue of city council bringing back the 2A sanctuary resolution that was actually discussed earlier in the work session. We all know that gun law is one of the most divisive issues in American politics. I know that this rings true here in the Queen Cities because the sheriff told me so. In fact, Sheriff Robertson, the vice mayor's own brother, told me that 2A money that's going to make the election a contentious one. He told me this right before he discouraged me from running, and without ever mentioning that his brother intended to be one of the contentious contenders. One week after our meeting, the vice mayor's apparently 2A-funded campaign signs went up across the city. And now you are insisting that our citizens put their lives at risk to show up for a public hearing to rehash a debate that simply doesn't need to be had. Shame on you. When you sit there and you couch your interest in bringing back the discussion about making Stanton a 2A sanctuary city and some bullcrap lie about wanting to hear from all of our citizens, we know you are pandering. You have heard from our citizens on both sides of this issue. In fact, you have heard from almost 400 Stanton residents asking you to forego the political shenanigans of this worthless 2A gesture in favor of truly representing the needs of our city. So what I'm here to speak to tonight is the fact that you are our elected leaders. You have already heard both sides of this argument. There is nothing new to the discussion that can be discerned from holding a public hearing. I now suggest that you instead step into a true leadership position and make a decision based on the merit and the validity of the issue and not on public opinion because our city is divided and they are looking to you to do the right thing. So let me speak to a few details and facts that should guide your decision above and beyond any political leniency and allegiance that you have so that you can, in fact, do the right thing. According to Richard Schreger, a professor at the University of Virginia Law School, sanctuary resolutions have no real legal force. Legal experts say the proclamations are simply symbolic and that law enforcement agencies cannot legally refuse to uphold the law. The fact that you are misleading my friends and family who are true gun rights advocates by falsely presenting this option as a valid protection of their rights is dishonest. It only serves your political agenda, and it does nothing to protect our rights or the Second Amendment. Despite the insinuation that gun laws proposed here in Virginia violate the Second Amendment, none of the policies which are law in other states have been deemed unconstitutional by the Supreme Court. Generally, the courts decide in the US legal system whether an enacted measure is constitutional, not local governments. So I'm confused about your irreverent attitude towards our judicial system and your false perception that you have any authority over the checks and balances that are the foundations of our constitution and of our country. While resolutions can broadly declare support for the Second Amendment, so they are basically a performative measure with no real teeth, what they actually do is to label state gun laws as invalid. But local municipalities do not have any independent authority to create sanctuaries from state law. State law applies equally to the people in a sanctuary city as well as outside. It is literally a moot point. The Second Amendment serves as the legal basis for the right of people to keep in their arms. Their state and local governments can regulate whether residents may, for example, carry guns in public. Laws regulating who may receive or possess guns are set out at the federal level. The ATF, a division of the Department of Justice, administers the Gun Control Act, which is US federal law that regulates the firearms industry and firearms owners. Shotguns, rifles, machine guns, firearm mufflers, and silencers are regulated by the National Firearms Act. So how exactly does making Stanton a sanctuary city actually protect our rights any more so than the Second Amendment already does? How does it supersede state and federal policies, our constitution, our judicial system, or the government agencies intended to provide and enforce legal guidelines? The answer is, it doesn't, and it won't do anything except create further ill will between opposing sides of this issue. I suggest that you instead advise our city's 2A supporters to advocate at the state level, like I did to change medical cannabis laws. Encourage your supporters to spend their money funding legal challenges to state laws that they believe are unconstitutional. Educate our residents on how to lobby Congress for the changes that they want to see.
Ms. Narducci, your time is up. Thank you. Your time is up, Ms. Narducci. Your time is up. Thank you. Thank you. Your time is up, Ms. Narducci. Your time is up. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Welcome.
Allison Profeta. I live at Parry Court in Stanton. I want to thank Mr. Plowman for his presentation this evening, and I know he works very hard, but he did make it sound like we need to hire Steven Spielberg's crew, and I know that he doesn't work here in Virginia because I see the meetings that take place from other localities that publish them online. In addition, I want to note that while Councilwoman Need opened this topic during the work session by discussing the deaf and hard-of-hearing population here in Stanton, he centered the entire conversation on you, on council and staff, on what the various options will offer you and what problems it might present to you. And while those issues are valid, it rendered the disability community here in Stanton invisible once again. I don't know if any of you identify with that community, and I'm certainly not asking that you publicly identify one way or another. I just want to preface this by saying that I'm speaking as if I'm addressing able-bodied people. From theada.gov, which is the American with Disabilities Act, city governments often have not conducted thorough self-evaluations of their current facilities, programs, policies, and practices to determine what changes are necessary to meet the ADA's requirements and have not developed transition plans to implement these changes. In response to an email that I sent to her, Robin Wallace, the Stanton City FOIA officer, responded, quote, "In response to your request for a copy of the city's ADA self-evaluation, I have spoken with the city's ADA coordinator, and he is unaware of any such records throughout his four-year tenure." As Councilwoman Need stated, Stanton only offers audio livestream and recording. Lexington, Waynesboro, Augusta County, Winchester, and Roanoke all offer that as well, but in addition, they offer folks the opportunity to participate in real time with their government by not limiting public comments to only those people who can stand here or call in. And please note that Stanton only allows calls and public comments for as long as the uncodified emergency ordinance is renewed, and as of right now, it's only until mid-January. Those other cities I listed allow public comments to be emailed, mailed, dropped off, submitted via official website, not just prior to the meeting, but also during and up until it's time for public comments. They also are read into the public record during the meeting, which Stanton does not do. They use video for livestreaming as well as recording, all of those localities, but not Stanton. All of their recordings then utilize closed captions, and Lexington, Augusta County, and Roanoke offer closed captions on their livestreams. If you were to livestream to Facebook, there is a capability that you could turn on that would include closed captioning on your livestream. And in terms of your concerns about FOIA requests being cumbersome, you already have a FOIA officer who I know firsthand does an amazing job, and I find it at best irresponsible to state out loud at a public meeting that that is your concern. Is that a message you really want to convey to people with disabilities? That you're being handed money you don't have to match or pay back? Money that could be spent opening up wide avenues of accessibility to people with disabilities, chronic conditions, transportation issues, and more? And you're going to do the bare minimum because you don't want future FOIA requests to be too hard? Or because someone doesn't want their job to potentially be a bit harder? I appreciated Councilwoman Robertson, the centering that you did of the SDB. I urge you to reach out to their students, families, and teachers, learn more about the Americans with Disabilities Act, have your ADA coordinator present, not just your IT person. You did a Christian invocation tonight, so Google told me that the Bible says, "You shall not curse the deaf or put a stumbling block before the blind." So I urge you to please remove as many stumbling blocks as you can and ensure that Stanton, at the very least, is as accessible as other area localities, some of whom are also using or have used CARES Act funding to make significant improvements that more fully align with the Americans with Disabilities Act. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. As the mayor of the city of Stanton, I call this meeting. Yes, sir. Mr. Rosenberg.
Are you not planning to reconvene in a closed?
Yeah. I need to close this meeting out. My apologies. My apologies. How about I give everybody a five-minute break?
And perhaps you want to explain to folks what's going to occur.
Okay. I'll be happy to. We need to go back into a closed meeting. We did not finish our discussion from earlier due to time restraints. So at this point, I am going to close this meeting out for a five-minute break.
Recede.
All right, so we're going to recess. Thank you. We will recess for five minutes, and then we will be back for a closed meeting. Thank you, everyone, for participating tonight in the Stanton City Council meeting. All right. Councilmember Holmes.
I move the council into a closed meeting for the discussion and consideration of the engagement of candidates for special counsel to advise city council, consideration the recruitment and employment and position of the city attorney and a consultant, conduct such recruitment pursuant to code, section 2.2-3711A1.
All right, so we have a motion to go into a closed meeting. Do we have a second? We have a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Ms. Need?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
I mean, aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Ms. Doll?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Oats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you. We're in closed session.
Mayor Doll, I mean, Mel, Mayor Oats.
That's okay. That's all right. Councilmember Holmes.
You can call me Madam.
No. No, it's fine.
I move the councils reconvene in an open meeting and certify to the best of each member's knowledge that only lawful exempt public business matters were discussed, and only public business matters as identified in the closed meeting motion were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Ms. Doll?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Oats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Need?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you. And with that, I call this meeting adjourned. As mayor, I call this meeting of Stanton City Council to order. I note that this meeting is being broadcast over the city's cable channel.